Welcome to Tony Time. Well, we are having shows going forward with the council members of City Hall. And the reason for that is I would like the audience to know each and every council member, aside from seeing them on television, in the council chambers, to meet them as real people. So you understand a lot more about the person when you watch the meetings. So today, our first guest on this is Mike Swanton, Ward 1. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
How are you?
First guest, thank you.
You are the first.
I thought maybe you're, are you starting from Ward 1, then 2, then 3, then 4?
No.
Okay.
I'm just doing the council members first.
Just the first one to say yes, huh?
Yes, you were the first one to say yes.
Thank you.
Well, welcome. And, and so let's talk about a little bit, how long have you been in Maine? What brought you to Maine?
My parents.
Oh, yeah?
My dad was a cop in New York City. He put in his 20 years and decided he'd had enough of New York City. Things were changing politically and we had been coming to Maine and he liked the pace of life in Maine. I don't know if he had a midlife crisis or what, but starting about 64, he went, we'd come up summers and he'd go, "We're gonna move here." And two years later, we moved here.
Wow.
So.
Great.
And I haven't been back to New York, I haven't been back to my whole old hometown for 24 hours since.
Wow.
Yeah. The suburbs are awful.
You were born in Queens, though.
I was born in Queens.
Yeah.
But grew up in Garden City, five miles outside of Queens, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Now, are you an only child, or?
No, no, I have two older brothers. I had two older brothers. Bill passed away in May.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Hear that. So you went to school here, or college here, or how did it?
I was, I started, I was in the 9th grade when we moved to Maine. And I spent one year at Farmington. They said, "Come back when you grow up." And I didn't go back or grow up, so.
Yeah, oh, well, good. We should never grow up.
Yeah, and, and then I have a whole theory about higher education, too, so.
Oh, okay. But you created a wonderful life and career for yourself.
Yes, I had a grand old time.
I mean, you, I mean, you created your company, right?
I worked for, I was living at home on 4th Street, Bitterford Pool, waiting for something to happen. And I had applied at a few places, waiting to hear back from them. And my old man said, "Garnett's next door putting in a heating system for Ray Schoff. Go help him." "Yes, sir." And I worked for Garnett for 17 years.
Wow.
So.
Garnett Coal Pit.
Plumbing, heating, electrical.
Right, exactly. So you worked with him, and then you spun off from that, Mike?
Yes, I was coming back through town, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, stopped in to see my old buddy Greg Carroll, who owned Rumbury's Boatyard at the time.
Yeah.
And he said, "When are you going into business for yourself?" "I kinda like my little life the way it is." He says, "Too bad. It's time for you to go into business for yourself. If you need money, I'll lend you money. You gotta do it." And I says, "Well, I can't stand doing this. I can't stand doing that." And he says, "Well, don't do that. You know, don't do heat. Do just friggin' plumbing."
Yeah.
The light came on and went big. So I went down and told Garnett that this is March.
Yeah.
"I'll finish doing all the projects you had lined up for the winter, but after that, I'm sorry, I'm on my own." And.
I'm sure he was fine with that.
He sort of has that denial about that.
Okay. Okay, I think the older he got, he mellowed out.
Oh, he was never angry. You just, I just don't think he ever believed it.
Yeah, well, true, true. Well, then, how old were you at that time?
I don't know.
Teens, I mean?
No, no, 35 or 40.
Oh, okay. All right. And, and you're married?
1990, so I would've been 38, yeah.
Okay, you were then 38. I kinda met your lovely wife, kind of in passing. So when did you get married, I mean?
Ah, we started dating in 77 and married in 79.
Okay, wonderful. You have children, or?
No, never had kids.
Yeah, me either.
She said, "I'll have all you want, but you're staying home and raising them. I'm going to work."
Okay.
"Yes, dear." And so we talked about it on occasion. I was thinking about it and I was coming back from town one day and Percy Dion was having a graduation party for his daughter. I went to high school with Percy and I went, "Maybe it's a little late to start."
Yeah, yeah.
If my contemporaries are graduating their kids, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and I mean, I know that you have a lot of hobbies.
Yeah.
You have a motorcycle, I know that.
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the one that started me off was a Harley Davidson Road King.
Okay.
And that was too nice to drive around in the winter, so I found a junk Honda and fixed it up so I could ride that. When there's sand and salt on the road, you're into three hours of cleaning for the Harley.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's that great day in January, it would be nice to buzz around. So that's what the Honda was for. Uncle Charlie said, "Hey, come out to the barn." He takes this tarp off of this 1985 BMW that had 2,200 miles on it.
Wow.
He sold it to me for a decent price, so that's three.
Wow.
It was on Craigslist. 1971 Triumph, $1,000. That's mine.
Yeah.
Coming up and grab that. What else happened? There was a Sportster in there and a Norton, a 1950 Norton.
Wow.
Wonderful old machine, so.
So that's been kind of a hobby of yours for a long time?
Yeah. Yeah.
So I mean, periodically, I see you out riding.
Yeah, I actually work on them more than I ride on them.
Yeah.
Because that's, some people knit.
Yeah.
I bring old motorcycles back to life, so.
And do you sell them after you fix some of them?
Um, well, I sold the BMW because Uncle Charlie died, so he didn't know, he wouldn't know I sold it.
Yeah.
Uh, but it was a very boring ride.
Really?
The thing sort of disappeared underneath you and it was just smooth and quiet and it's very boring. Great commuter. I mean, you could put 100,000 miles on that bike, but it just had no character.
Yeah, yeah.
So I sold it to somebody who loves it. The Sportster, I bought in pieces. I reassembled it, got it running, went, "These are awful motorcycles." I sold that. So now I'm just down to four.
Okay, you're down to four. And of course, which one's your favorite, the Harley?
It's like children, which one's your favorite child? What am I doing, you know? It's like, I'm riding with the wife, but we'll take the Harley.
Yeah.
And.
That's, I think that's great, I mean.
Go to an antique show, I'll take the Norton.
So it sounds like that's something that you just get a thrill out of when you're putting them together and bringing them back to life.
Yeah, I can work on them for hours.
Do you watch American Pickers?
I've seen it.
Because they're very much into the Indian motorcycle.
Well, you have to remember what reality TV is.
Well, I know.
It's scripted.
Yeah. Well, they were up here in Maine, over at Trader Dave's, Dave's Trader in Arundel a couple of years ago. And I know they're scripted, but you know, he's always talking about the Indian motorcycle, which I have no idea about. But, you know, Bentley's, all the Harleys that are out there, I mean, do you go there often, or?
I've only been there a few times.
Yeah.
Like when I had the Sportster. It was in pieces. I wanted to know, these things don't come with instructions and the manuals are horrible. And I wanted to know how to root the rear brake cable, or hose, from the master cylinder to the disc brake. And I didn't know where to run it, over the chain, under the chain, between the chain. So I went to Bentley's, figuring there's hundreds of Harleys there.
Yeah.
There wasn't anything older than a 2000. And this was a 1980.
Okay.
And it's like, these people aren't into motorcycles? That's jewelry.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, I get that. Mike and I were talking about before the show started. He likes his toys, electronic toys. And you were showing me your phone, which takes great pictures. I like photography. I wanna go back to film. I wanna get out of the digital and go back to film.
Huh.
I do.
Who's gonna develop it?
Hunt Photo.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Hunt Photo will go and develop it. But because of the depth of the film compared to what we have now, digital, there's a difference. There's a big.
Oh, yeah, and get the depth of field on a digital that you can't, this does.
Does it really?
Yeah, you put it in portrait mode, your face will be clear, the background will be fuzzy.
Okay. You know what I would like to do in the future, like in the few months? Let me take some pictures with film. You take pictures with that and let's compare. Wanna do that? I would love to see the, I would love personally to see the difference. Because right now, I'm like convinced that film has more depth. And I would like to find out if I'm right or wrong. I don't mind being wrong. But since you put it out there with your camera, I can bring in some photos. You can look. I'll look. I suppose we need to have a third person to judge, but we can find that.
Okay.
All right.
I've only taken four great photographs in my life, so.
Oh, really? Okay.
And one of them was with the phone.
All right. See, I got the Snowy White Owl in Bitterford Pool a couple of years ago with my film camera. And I have a fear of birds. I mean, I will not eat eggs. I will not eat chicken, turkey. I've never had that in my life.
Huh. My mother-in-law was like that with snakes.
Oh, was she?
Yeah. I can understand snakes. I can understand chickens.
Yeah, no, I, I would, well, in fact, there's a farm on West Street that during the spring, there's sheep, had little sheep.
Yeah, Miles York.
Okay, I wanted to hold a baby sheep. I pulled in there and a chicken chased me back to my car. I could not go any further. So the Snowy White Owl was like four, it was out in the marsh, right by the A-frame there, in Bitterford Pool. And grabbed my camera and I went out there and I kept the camera up and I took little baby steps, thinking, "Don't fly, don't fly. I'll die. Don't fly, they won't find me in the marsh. Don't," you know. I got probably from here to that chair, that close. And it did not move. I did see its head go around, but I kept the camera up and I got some really great photos. I just entered the Down East photo thing. But anyway, um, yeah, it's, you know, and those photos, every line, every feather is so precise. So that's why I'm saying film. But.
What does it cost these days?
Well, it costs a lot.
Yeah.
It does.
I have 2,000 photographs on that camera and it doesn't cost me anything as opposed to dig, I mean, developing film.
It's more expensive now.
And that's what I like about throwing out the bad ones rather than throwing out $10.
Okay, so tell me, there are photos on there, you print them out off your computer?
I never, I, I don't think I've, I, I don't think I've printed any photographs off of my camera. I can, but I don't.
But would you put it through the computer to print it out?
Yes.
Okay.
Just because I, yes, I could, my wife's printer would be able to do that. I can take photographs from this and send them to my wife's printer and print them out.
Okay.
And do that with my printer.
Okay.
So I said, hers and mine.
Yeah.
You don't touch the wife's computer.
So hers could do it, you could download these to your computer?
Yes, I've downloaded many, yes.
And forward them to her?
Yes, I can, I can email them straight out of here. I can instant message them straight out of this. It's an iPhone X.
Right, okay. See, this is what technology is doing now, where it's just really wonderful, it is so good. But I'm still caught up with the old tradition. I'll change eventually. But right now, I wanna do that comparison.
Yeah, just like LP versus CD.
Yeah.
There is a difference, but for the average person, it isn't worth it.
True, true. Well, the LP, though.
Warmer tones, sorry.
No?
I, I haven't listened. My old album collection, I was going to put on the computer and realized what horrible shape all my albums were in, so. And by the time I was done with getting the turntable and the amplifier and the software and I could've bought all the tunes I wanted off of iTunes for that amount of money.
True.
And, and the hours that I had involved in it, the skips in the records and CDs don't skip. Or they're not even CDs. Digital files don't skip.
It's amazing. And you know, I hear, I mean, there's a comparison to, okay, what you were just saying, Mike, that, that, you know, there's a richer tone, there's a richer this. And yet, the convenience of digital.
Yeah.
And the money saved, I guess, also, is good.
There's a couple of professional photographers down Bitterford Pool, Michael Lutch and Harold Rosenberg.
Yeah.
And I was listening to them talk about the good old days and they had a single reflex camera that was top of the line I had never even heard of. They used to keep them in the safes at home. They were that expensive.
Yeah.
He says, "Now, it doesn't even make a decent doorstop."
Yeah.
Nobody wants them.
Nobody wants them anymore. Funny, I just bought a film camera, another one for film. I got it at a yard sale.
Sure.
And it's Olympus.
Yeah.
So I got that, I'm gonna play with that for a while and see what I come up with. But I find that all fascinating.
Do you do black and white or color?
I love black and white.
So you can still do that at home?
Yeah.
Could.
I could, definitely. Speaking of black and white, when I first met you, talking 12 years ago, probably, you always reminded me of a 1950's movie star. No, in black and white. You always have. When you wear your tux.
I don't have a tux.
Well, you wear this black suit.
That's just a black suit, yeah. It's not a tux.
It looks like a tux.
Okay, the lapels are wrong for a tux.
Oh, okay, well, I didn't look that close. But you wore it to one event and I was talking to somebody and you walked in and I looked.
The inauguration. This is the last time I remember wearing it.
Okay. I saw you and I'm looking, I'm thinking, "God, he looks like a 1950's movie star." Just the way it fit, just with the mustache and everything. But I kept seeing you in black and white, because I'm a visual person. And I kept looking over and I just kept seeing you in black and white.
And my bowtie was black and white?
Yep.
It was made out of bird feathers.
Oh, really? Well, I would never touch it with my fear of birds.
Oh, sorry, I won't show it to you then.
Yeah, no, 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 that's okay. Well, let's, let's move forward, let's move forward a little bit. You're Ward 1.
Yes.
What brought you to that? Why did you want to do that for the city?
Jim Emerson was doing it.
Yeah, I remember Jim.
He was appointed by Mayor Wallace Nutting.
Yeah, I remember him.
So I guess he did it for more than four years. He was appointed by Wallace Nutting because I think it was Dumont left for some reason or another. And so Jim filled out that term, ran for reelection and won a couple of times. And then in 2011, I think it was, he says, "Okay, I'm not running for reelection." He put that out on his blanket email and three weeks later, nobody had filed papers. And I said, "Susan, would you mind?"
Yeah.
She says, "No, of course not. I'd be proud to have." So I went down to see Carmen Morris, the city clerk. "Has anybody taken out papers? Nobody yet." This is August 18th, we're like three weeks into it. So, "Well, can I have papers?" And she said, "Are you sure you wanna do this?"
Yeah.
And I said, "Well, I don't know, let's ask the next person who walks by." And my friend Peter walked by the door. I said, "Peter, I'm thinking of running for, for council." And he said, "You out of your mind?" I said, "Well, it's unanimous then. Yeah, I'll take the papers." Had them filled out and brought them back the next week. And Susan Sexton and Don Farnham had also taken out papers by that time. So it was a three-way race and I won.
Great. So, okay, so you jumped in there.
Yeah, not knowing a thing. I had been to like three council meetings in my life. Jumped in both feet.
Wow. And?
And learned real quick.
I bet you did. I bet you did.
The city didn't work the way I thought it did. You know, I was going, "Oh, taxes are high. Why can't we just drop 25% right off?" And it's not that simple.
No, no, no.
And getting into it, people say, "Why are taxes so high?" And we go, "There ain't much left to cut. This carcass has been picked clean. If you want police, this is what it's gonna cost. If you want fire, this is what it's gonna cost."
Right.
And Jeremy Ray, I think we spend, we spend less money than our peers. Jerry's very good about extracting money out of the state. He's very frugal. So there isn't much you can cut out of the school budget either.
Yeah, well, you know, since I started to videotape the meetings, I have learned so much. Because I listen.
Yeah.
I listen, because I have to, I have to listen. But I've learned a lot and exactly what you said, you can't cut anywhere else. I was under a different assumption, too. And I'm only in a little room videotaping all of you. But I hear every word, I'm understanding more of what needs to be done. So I mean, now at this point, I mean, did you ever think you would be involved with City Hall when you, like maybe five years ago or 10 years ago?
Well, I've always been politically aware, always eager to argue politics.
Okay.
So this was, this was a good fit for me. The economy was in a downturn, so I wasn't working all that much. So I had the free time to devote to this. So it was fun.
I can tell when you're up there. You know, I can tell, because with, when all of you are having a debate or talking or whatever it is, you usually sit quietly. But you're the sort of man that when you sit quietly and you're listening, and I know you're taking it all in, but when you speak, everybody gets quiet.
They wanna hear, "What's he gonna say this time?"
What's he gonna say?
And it comes out, "Sorry."
No, there's no sorry there. It's who you are.
Yes. And, and, and we work very well together. We have an excellent council.
Yeah.
There's no petty backbiting, there's, you know, we all get along. There isn't one of them I haven't spent time with outside of a meeting or wouldn't have, I'd have lunch with all of them. We work really well together and we have different opinions.
Yeah, which is good.
Yeah.
I mean, and I can see that, the different opinions that pop up. And the good thing about it is no one's afraid to bring up the different opinions.
Right.
I mean, what happened to the days? I mean, as you know, the past couple of years, when people talk politics, it gets really ugly. And, you know, "I'm not your friend anymore because you believe in this person and that person." What happened to the days of respecting the other person's opinion and who they like? I think that's gone. And up there on the board, all of you have different opinions, but nothing turns into a nasty debate, I guess I wanna say.
And to Richard Rams's credit, somehow, I think he was responsible for getting rid of the D's and the Rs in front of people's names on the ballot box.
Okay. Yeah.
And so why lie about it? This is who I am. It doesn't matter whether I'm Republican or a Democrat.
Right.
You know, just vote for who you think is, would do the best job.
I agree.
And it works out fine.
Yeah, I agree. Because all of you went, well, in fact, last week at the meeting, Jim Bowdre.
Yes.
Got the key to the city, which was very touching. And you were taking photos and Alan was talking to Jim and giving him the key. And I'm in the back room thinking, "Oh, my God, I didn't know this was happening. Let me get the microphone."
Oh, yeah.
I had no idea that that was coming up.
That's too bad, yeah.
Yeah. And I just, you know, I grabbed the microphone, I'm putting the batteries in, I'm running out and I asked Alan, you know, "Is it okay?" He said, "Oh, yeah, do it." And I thought that was the most wonderful, thoughtful moment. Because all of you up there came down and greeted Jim. And he's kind of a legend.
Oh, Coach Bowdre? Absolutely.
Now, now, were you involved with him as Alan was, or? School-wise, or?
No, he lived on the pool.
Yeah.
So everybody knew who Coach Bowdre was.
Yeah, yeah. Because so many people had him as coaches, as a coach.
In St. Francis, I don't know the, I don't.
Wasn't he at Thornton, or am I dead wrong?
Uh, St. Francis.
St. Francis, oh, okay.
And I don't know what he did for extracurricular activity.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, here, I always thought he was at Thornton. Okay, that's good to know. No, I had Jim on the show one time about a year ago.
Very soft spoken, very corny jokes. Loved him.
Love him. I mean, he sat here and talked about when he was in the war and Maine and it was, I think the show went for an hour. And I just let him talk.
Yeah.
Because it was interesting. I mean, that was history sitting there, definitely. So I mean, but that was a nice moment at City Hall.
Yeah.
You know, just seeing all that happening so quickly. But no, I'm very happy, because I'm learning a lot. And I'm a people person, even though I moved here to be a recluse. I am a people person. And watching you and watching Jim and watching Alan and all of you. But boy, you sit back and that's it. If you've watched the meetings and you've seen Mike, he's sitting back, just watching.
Waiting for it to all end.[1740.32] Really, I've made up my mind when I walked in there, I've already made up my mind and, you know.
Yeah.
Come on, let's get it, let's vote on this. I already, you know, we can talk for twenty minutes and I know it's going to be a unanimous decision.
Right.
What's going to over with?
Yeah, I, I, you know, and then, like I said, when you speak, everything gets quiet. Because Mike is known not to speak that often. But I think that's good. My uncles were like that. Men a few words, but when they spoke, wow, look out. Mike, we're running out of time.
Oh, great.
Can you believe that? I can't. I mean, we've gone thirty minutes.
Oh, good.
Yeah. But, you know, the goal is, you know, I want to, I, I want the community to know that everybody is a person. Instead of looking and going, oh gee, whoa, 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 you know, like some of the people do in the community. Because they don't know the person or understand the person. But it's, all of you have a life, all of you have hobbies. All of you have come up here from who knows where, or you've been born and raised here.
Yeah, I think the majority of the council is from away, which is unheard of.
But wouldn't you think that's, that brings in a lot of different ideas and opinions?
Yes, it does. Yeah, and it's an accurate cross-section of the city at this point.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, exactly. Which I think the board is fantastic and all of you just play well together. I can say that, can't I?
Yeah.
You play well together. Good.
Or work well together.
Okay, they work well together. But Mike, I can't thank you enough for being on the show.
You're welcome, thanks for having me.
I really, really, really appreciate it. Taking the time, coming on here and everything, even though I'm still seeing you in black and white as a fifties movie star.
Who was it?
You know, I keep going to Cary Grant and I keep going to that whole area. It's like Cary Grant in the suit with the bowtie. He didn't have a mustache.
No, he didn't.
No, I know that.
He was funny.
Oh, he, oh, Arseneck and O'Lease?
Yeah, and there was another one where he, I can't think of, my wife watches all those old movies.
Oh, I do too.
And I'll walk by them and that guy was good.
But he was funny.
Yeah, and great slapstick. There was this thing where he had this ironing board and an egg and everything was just.
But that was humor.
Yes.
I mean, we, you crack up, I watch the old movies. I love the old ones with Cary Grant and Katharine Hepburn. And Cary Grant were good together.